I need a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve, uh, September eighth, council minutes.
Motion on the floor by Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Donnie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Agenda for this evening, I have a couple additions. Uh, first I have the gambling permit for the Knights of Columbus Raffle, that's their annual raffle. Um, that's at the Pierce Ballroom, January thirty first. Twenty, it says twenty fifteen, so I'm not sure if the rat- raffle actually starts after midnight or how they got that set up. But, that's what's actually on the date. Um, secondly, um, we have a stop sign request. That is on Second Avenue, uh, in North and Vincent Street. It's a four-way stop. That's the only two that I have. I know we got a fire chief here, he's got some things to go over with the fire truck as well. He's on our. He's on our department head list, more towards the bottom of the council meeting. Brian, you got stuff you gotta do?
Nope.
Here for the duration. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes Toby, Scott, um, Scott Headland from S C H is here. To give us a little info.
And because of the way this is kinda set up, um, on our notepads, I'd like to run these concurrent right after Jim Andrews. Towards the bottom.
Yeah, actually if Scott was Bobby too in the public works.
Can you report? Is Bobble here today?
Oh, there's Bobble.
So, five over there. Any other additions or corrections? If not, um, you get a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
I make the motion with the additions.
Motion on the floor by Steph, can you get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mike, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, first item we have on the agenda is a quick claim deed, uh, for Four Seasons Shroom Company. Uh, that is Shroom Company, right, it just says Four Seasons on the agenda. And that would be for, uh, lots one and two of Block Two in Industrial Park. Scotty?
As we spoke last week, or, uh, last council meeting, two weeks ago, they approached us looking for those two lots for their company. So, as requested, I put together the documents for the meeting tonight for a quick claim deed for Lot One in Block Two, a quick claim deed for Lot Two in Block Two, and, um, a business development agreement upon purchase for the building and the information that goes with that. So, those three documents are put together, um, for the company.
I get a motion on the floor to approve that, uh, sale of Lots One, Block Two. Lots One and Two, I'm sorry, Block Two. Can I get a motion and a second for each, Lot One and then Lot Two? Certainly. First one will be Lot One of Block Two Industrial Park, can I get a motion on that? Make a motion. Motion on the floor by Mike, can you get a second?
I'd second that.
Second by Matt, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, and we have Lot Two, Block Two of Industrial Park.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Donnie, can you get a second?
I'd second that.
Second by Matt, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. There you go gentlemen. Can you guys start breaking ground?
Finish up the financing and, uh. I think they set up for three to four weeks for finish the loan process, and hopefully it's not too cold this fall yet.
Okay.
Well, so, could we get a motion and a second on, um, the business development agreement?
Uh, yeah, that's our standard, right?
Correct, yes.
Cause that goes with all the lots.
That goes with all the lots, correct.
That's our whole, um.
I'd make a motion to approve the business development agreement.
Uh, motion on the floor by Matt, can you get a second?
I'd second that.
Second by Mike, all those in favor.
It has a date of commence construction of the property by October first of two thousand fourteen. Right there, you see where I'm talking about?
To start.
To start, but are they gonna start building by two thou- that's, is, am I reading that wrong?
That should be two thousand fifteen.
So, they're gonna start building within the next two weeks, isn't that what that says? Do we need to change that?
Actually, it should.
Am I reading that wrong?
Should be fifteen.
No, no, it's starting construction.
Starting construction, yes.
In two weeks.
No, you should have, you should have one year to start.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, that's not right.
Okay. But then two thousand fifteen is here later.
The year is off.
See what I'm saying?
From the date of purchase, they've got one year to build.
I'm just reading it backwards, which is.
Yes, yes.
Developer shall commence construction of the project by October first of two thousand fourteen.
Should be, so then it should be two thousand fifteen.
Should be two thousand fifteen.
You're right.
So, it should say two thousand, should, that's why, just before we approve it, then velper shall commence construction of the project by two thousand.
Okay, go through that.
It's just a typo.
It's a typo in the business agreement, as all the quick claim deeds though.
Okay, that's, I just wanna be sure before we approve it that.
Yeah, we can approve it with the change of, that it's gonna be changed to two thousand fifteen.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's, that's, that's actually, do that motion. Uh, no, there is a motion on the floor and seconded. But, uh, yeah, that typo needs to be corrected.
Would that change where we're gonna go?
All those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, we have our Rivers Ferry Sewer Water Board, um, seems to me in the past we've made these appointments after the first few years, after first council meeting, but the county zomped like once these, um, earlier, um, I think we have kind of a dilemma where there's more, um, all the board seats are up at the same time, so we kinda wanted to break that up. So, basically, we were looking for, um, our three representatives we have from the city, which is Herb Bruszkowski, Mark Fighton, and Dave Fisher, uh, to approve those three terms as an outline in the county's request. Uh, Scott, you want to read what those terms actually were? Big Herb is on a two-year.
Yes.
Here it is.
Yep, so, this letter is to inform you that the following Rivers Ferry Sewer Water District Board member, members' terms will be up at the end of this year. Two-year term is Herb Bruszkowski, and three-year term is Dave Fisher and Mark Fighton. We'd like to reappoint them.
I think we have some good individuals on that board and, and, um, I think they're trying their best over there, and, uh, yeah, I'd like to keep those folks on.
I'll make the motion to approve those three for next, for the next term.
Motion on the floor by Donnie.
I would second that.
Second by Mike, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
I have your stain on one of them.
Uh, we have a resolution, uh, that we need to do to clear up some, some para issues. That is for, uh, Mark Dubur, Dubur, Dubur.
David Jinsky.
Just kidding, Mark. Our buddy Alf Bet, um, he is employed by the city as a part-time police officer, and, uh, we need to, um, clarify some para issues for that organization, so Scott, you wanna kinda give us, um, rundown of that?
Uh, I did get contacted by Para, and if you look in the letter, it says this is our second and final request for this position information that is incorrect, I was not notified until last week on this, so.
Uh.
If it was up to me, that was the first.
When did they say the initial request was sent?
Well, ten years, ten years, we can figure it out.
It doesn't say anywhere in the information, but anyway, um, so, the, the resolution is in front of you, um, it states that Mark Divisinski is a part-time police officer and is currently held, currently holds a position here at the city. And what we need to do is just file this information with Para, um, to get everything up to date, so to say.
Need a request to approve resolution zero nine two 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 zero one four dash one.
I make the motion that we go ahead and approve resolution nine twenty-two twenty fourteen dash one.
Motion on the floor by Steffi, can you get a second?
I'd second that motion.
Second by Mike, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, we have a two thousand fifteen Little Falls Visitors Guide, uh, I believe that is a donation request, or actually it's for, it's for advertisement.
Correct, um, Chris Bonenberg from Little Falls, uh, reached out to, to me in regards to advertising the City of Pierce in the Visitors Guide. Um, if you look at the second page in your packets or online, um, it kinda states how many copies, where the copies go, they're in the airport mall of America, um, discover racks out of our locations. So, they're placed in a number of the locations. I didn't really know if this was something done in the past, or what your thoughts were on this, so I brought this to council, um, obviously, you know, with, with penny bucks and breakfast and stuff like that in town, um, we obviously wanna promote friendly city as, with the city as far as being a visiting location. Um, so, it's, it's up to the council obviously, but this is the information that I followed in regards to if we wanna advertise.
Looking at that quarter page, and is that something you think we should look at, or do you think we should go with the app page, or?
We're in a lobbying association last year, did the eighth page for two hundred and sixty bucks.
That's what I was doing.
Yeah.
Uh, the age of a page is two sixty. The associa- the association.
Can you guys think?
Anytime you put advertising, we get the city out there and have potential people come in, I mean, that's obviously what we're looking to do.
Big plus for our businesses.
It's just a matter of what we wanna spend on, I guess, once a half page, you have Scott talking about that, maybe seven twenty-five, so.
I think it more so goes up what, what do we wanna advertise, if we are gonna advertise in this, so, obviously, you know, like, um, some of the businesses are golf course, obviously, um, different activities we can do in town, so I, I guess the bigger ad we have, the more that we can market for the city.
Do we have to design it?
I'm not positive on that, I think, I mean, on that, but, and I didn't wanna start looking into it until I knew that we were, obviously.
This is not tied into, I see, don't, you know, the Pierce Directory, is that tied together?
No, no, this is something completely separate.
Okay.
So, would this be listing individual businesses per se, Scott, companies?
No, I would try and tie it, but just watch the city in general. So, the golf course obviously would be a, a key point for us.
Library, public.
Library, and just different activities in town, we can do some events and stuff that we do in town, totally fast up like that, um. I, my opinion, I think a, a fourth of a page, like you said Toby, I think would justify what we need to put out there, but, and we don't need to do that at all, thanks, I'll put it up on to you guys. I just wanted to make you guys aware of it.
Well, I'd, I'd like to do a quarter page ad, I mean, like, it's gonna help all our businesses, it'll help us.
It's, we know four sixty for the ad, and then this ad production fee, then another seven fifty bucks for the production fee, whatever that is.
So, five thirty-five.
Five thirty-five.
Yep.
Unless you wanna stick with any of the page.
Yeah, I'd like to see a quarter page.
Business card size would be eight page.
Are we even eligible, it says, um, that the ad materials are devised by the page committee?
She just contacted us last week, so I'm sure we can fit it in there.
I just need to see a quarter page.
Yeah, yeah, I would. It's okay with you guys. You get a motion to go ahead with the quarter page ad?
I'd make a motion to approve the quarter page ad.
Motion on the floor by Matt, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Donnie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Veterans Memorial, not a new location, I know that, uh, our veterans, uh, have been, uh, looking for a spot, uh, council ad would pretty much take down in building park.
Jim Gerling actually approached me a month ago in regards to using the sign that they had for their, I believe it was a meal on Saturday night. Um, they wanna kinda remake that sign, hang it up, make it into a decent sign, obviously, so it doesn't tear it up and things like that, and actually put it in building park, but, I, I'm more so turned in the bop with that, um, obviously, we don't wanna it to be in the way of pushing snow and things like that.
They kinda wanna put it in the. They want a spot where the memorial's gonna go.
Yes, to kinda.
Like a future home.
Yeah, a future home, in regards to that.
Sure, that's a good idea.
So, they were just planning on posting it, um, upon your guys' decision, and from that point though, like I said, I, I, we should first talk to law and make sure it's out of the way, things like that, if it's gonna be there for a number of months, so.
What are your thoughts on it, Bob?
I just wonder if you could put that memorial in there, if that, like, that lion head fountain's gonna fit in with that whole.
Theme?
Theme of the park. Kinda takes away if you have a drinking fountain in front of a veterans memorial. I don't know if there's any talk about that, but.
I guess I have to agree with that, but, I mean.
I can see both sides of it.
But, yeah, maybe something a little bit more classier of a water fountain in that situation would probably be a little bit more respectful, I guess, too, I mean, you know, cartoon lion statue spitting out water, and then you have a veterans memorial behind it, I don't know, but that's the most respectable, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, I thought about possibly moving that lion head to this park over here, it's more of a kid-friendly park with regular equipment.
We used to have one.
Wasn't there a water fountain on the corner there at one point?
Yeah, that was before my time, apparently that hydrant, hydrant was the regular.
Oh, it was like a pump.
That doesn't work.
Yeah.
But I don't think there'd be that much to fix it, I guess, I don't know, but.
That would be probably a good location for that on that corner over there by that park, by the blue park or whatever, but.
The sand park.
The sand, Blue Sandy Park.
The sand park.
Then we could look for, um, something more fitting for, cause I don't wanna get rid of that one completely on me. See, that thing gets utilized a lot, people stop a lot.
Yeah. I agree as well, we kinda need to keep it there, I'm not sure what theme or, or you guys think might look better there, whatever, but.
Public Works Books, lot gets.
Maybe.
We can look in there, Steph and I can put our heads together with Bob, and some project we can look at over the winter here, right?
Do you see any issues with, uh, just having that sign there for now, Bob, so we can? Oh, no, not at all. No, that'll be fine. So, I guess I need a motion, um, to approve that temporary sign location in the spot of the actual memorial, or the location where the memorial is, is gonna go.
I'd make a motion to approve the veterans memorial sign location.
Motion on the floor by Matt, can we get a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Second by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We also have the Pierce Directory donation.
We spoke about this about a month ago, um, reason I'm bringing this up again is because the Pierce Commercial Club actually backed out of their donation of a thousand dollars. And the concept of this, the Pierce Directory is the donation from the city and the co- and the commercial club is to help local businesses advertise in this directory without such high advertising cost. Um, so I just wanted to bring it up again, being the commercial club is not, um, donating their portion. Honestly, I think the city actually, with the record, does most of the work anyway, maybe we kinda take it over and maybe we donate twelve hundred dollars instead of a thousand, or I, I guess I just wanted to kinda get your guys' thoughts, um, cause once again, it's more so to help the businesses in town, so, otherwise, leave it at a thousand, it's completely up to you, I just wanted to get your opinions.
Is there any reason the commercial club doesn't help they own this?
I don't know.
Well, it's a, it's a platform that they always advertise.
Exactly, so.
I mean, if you're looking at advertising within a city like that, within a pamphlet, I mean, why wouldn't you, why would they pay the money?
I am, I'm not sure, there is.
How soon do we need this, Scott?
Um, we don't really need it till February.
Direct, you start on a.
Uh, they'll, they'll start working on it well before it gets published in.
In February.
You know, it'll come out in February because of the elections this year, you know, you have to wait until, you know, when your council is and things like that.
Okay.
And I think it was the commercial club that originally requested it several years ago when it was first started.
I, I believe so, yes, but, as I stated, we kinda do a lot of the putting together of it.
Oh, we do all putting together, Scott.
Yes, so.
I know the Morrison Company Record did an excellent job with that thing together, that looks, uh, a lot of work.
On our city industry.
Yeah, a lot of work. And it'll, it looked really nice.
It is, it's a lot, I mean, for people that come in that are either new, a lot of our existing people or customers in our city come for those a lot, actually. They come and ask for it, especially it's got all the garbage information on it, when the delivery and pickup is, stuff like that, the spring stuff, um, there's a lot of information that helps.
So, the directory itself, as, and then the businesses would advertise in there, they still pay.
Correct.
For their little advertisement.
But at a smaller fee when we donated a thousand with the commercial club a thousand, so it was just not so expensive to them, is what the concept of it was. So, I, I, I just brought this forward again.
Well, can you, can you Scott, check with the commercial club and find out, you know, kinda what's going on with that, and.
Yeah, I tried, I guess, I didn't really get that information.
I guess if it's something that's directly benefiting members of the commercial club, why would the commercial club not want to put money towards this? Is I guess my question to somebody on there.
I got a lovely phone call saying that they weren't gonna be involved with it from their record, so that's as much as really, and I.
Well, then we, I'm all right with, I mean, like Terry said, and I know I am, and you're gonna end up with it, um, we take care of a lot of it here. So, we just make our, our, still make our donation, and the businesses that are going to advertise in there, they're still gonna pay their fee.
They're gonna have to pay more, is what it's gonna, is what I'm getting to.
Right, so if they're not, as a club not donating another.
So, it, it's gonna be broken down into advertising amongst the community, whoever has a small business wants to donate to it or, or advertising it, okay? Um, so the concept is, what I'm getting to is they don't wanna, oh, it's like, here we don't have a directory, or we have a very small directory, directory because businesses aren't doing it because it's costing them too much to advertise. If that makes sense.
So, I, I guess I'd like to table it by a little bit more information from the commercial club on, on.
I was.
I don't understand.
I guess, I mean.
I was at the, I was at the.
Same with her, okay.
I was at a meeting when they talked about it, but they didn't finalize it, so there was another meeting afterwards.
I did get some info, they wanna stick more into Saint Ignite and stuff like that, is where they wanna put more money in this.
I, what I got out of some of the members is that it was a choice of where to spend money, and then the frequency of this thing, I, I heard a few of the people mention that, well, should a guy be doing this every year, or if you do it every other year, you know, you have enough copy, I don't, with some of that stuff, to be real honest, I kind of agreed with some of you guys' thoughts, well, why? But it was like, I think, a pretty, I think a pretty divided bunch, and it was just enough of them thought maybe they should spend their money on other, and, and, yeah.
It is every other year.
So, with the lack of, so with the lack of a donation from the commercial club itself, is it going to cost each individual business that wants to advertise in that directory more?
More, yeah.
Okay, I understand now.
Okay, so, and which, we can totally put it that way and keep us at a thousand dollars, I just wanted to make you guys aware of this. Um, so you know what's going on, not that I was gonna lose the directory or something like that, because.
Right, I think the directory we need to keep.
Right, I do too.
I don't know, but, that was necessary.
We make our annual donation, or, the first year came out two years ago, I think it was, Terry, am I correct?
Two years, I suppose, was the second edition.
That was the second edition, okay, and we make a thousand dollar donation to that.
So, we have in the past.
And we, yes, and we approved.
Yep.
You guys approved it, um, bottom of the.
To make the thousand, but in the meantime, the commercial club has decided not to.
Check out of their thousand.
So, we can stay at our thousand, or we can consider putting in a little more of a donation so that the advertising price stays down a little bit for whoever decides to advertise in, right?
So, we advertise in there also with the clubhouse and the golf course, and in the campground.
Correct.
Do we pay a fee for that too, or is that included with the thousand?
Well, that's not included with the thousand, no.
So, yes, we do pay enough.
Well, I mean, the city wants the thing, my opinion is, we stay with our thousand dollars, we pay, you know, we're gonna have to pay probably, uh, five, ten bucks more for our little ads for advertising the city businesses. Everybody that's gonna wanna advertise in there is gonna, you know. Just because the commercial club is backing out, I don't feel we should.
No.
You know?
No, no, no.
No. That's my opinion.
Absolutely, no.
We're doing work administratively with it and everything.
Yeah, I guess, I was just wondering, you know, I wanted some clarification on why, you know, they were going down.
I don't think that, I don't think that they.
The cost thing, you know, I, I, I under- I understand that.
I think they're, they're working on limited budgets like everybody else and have decided.
We'll leave it at a thousand, but I just wanted to make you guys aware that wasn't the end point, thank you.
Okay.
So, we need a motion to, uh.
Uh, we already approved it all.
That would, that would. Uh, then brought to my attention to, um, actually through Scott, that the school, I believe, wanted to set up a, uh, city council debate, um, for, uh, people who are running for council seats this time around. Um, I know we, uh, looked at some dates, um, or at least I went through some dates, and for me right now, I don't know how this is gonna work for you guys, but.
Well, what's the format gonna be, a little more depth information here, or?
What we're looking at doing is getting, um, people up for election and running for election to have a debate at City Hall, we wanna put it on channel ten, we'll run it live, um, so the public can be involved, and also try and get as much of the public that we can involved, um, that, it's gonna be facilitated by the school, um, or the students, the, the.
Like the civics class and the government classes.
The point of it is to get our younger generation involved, um, and try and get them in tune to what smaller city politics, um, kinda all entails, so.
And to, and to let the public find out more about what the candidates are about.
Correct.
You could open a shoot down all the way.
I think it'd be interesting.
So, um, I'm working with the two teachers, which would be Dean Damon and, uh, Glenn Gruber, to get four students here to facilitate it, and then we wanna try and get as much of the community involved as we can, um.
How long is this, uh, I'm thinking this taken, is it gonna be a?
Well, it depends on when some of your council members are.
I go out to get a point on time.
In real debates, don't they set in time, like you only have X amount of time to answer questions?
And the question's, and the question's gonna be prefabricated, that the, um, candidates are gonna know what the questions are before you.
Oh, God, no.
That's usually out.
That's, no, the students, um, I'm gonna kinda. Lead the students in what is going on here, and then have them put together, we're trying to make it as a class project for them to put together.
So, they would have to research, I mean, they're gonna have to come, before they do this, they need to research, what are issues going on in the city, what are?
So, and they can put together.
So, it would be questions curtailed to not just general.
Correct.
To the city, Pierce.
And we wanna get, um, once again, the community involved too, that's very important, obviously, um.
Did you cover up that live feed?
Yes. Our, our tower was, okay, bad. So, potentially, what I'm thinking is October twenty-second, it's a Wednesday, um, there's no school activities on Wednesday nights. The, the biggest thing is getting all of our members to be able to have that time off.
Yeah, I know that week will work the best for me, cause right now I am flooded with.
I'm too good with work every Wednesday.
I don't know.
Are you concerned for you?
Absolutely.
I think we'll just hold it in the ER, we'll, hey, we'll be good.
Live feed satellite.
Uh, you wanna let us know what the time is, that's gonna be, that's got, get that off. Yes, I'm still working. Yes, I'm still working on what's gonna work for the students. Um, as far as the timeframe of the actual debate, we can set that to.
Well, let's, tentatively, should we go for the twenty second and then if something changes?
That way I can start scheduling the school.
Okay. We have a public hearing, uh, that's our special assessment hearing. We need to set, uh. I think that's supposed to be for twenty fifteen.
I'm, um, I'm thinking that if we have a half an hour before our next council meeting, which will be the fifteenth, I believe, um, or thirteen, I'm sorry. So like six thirty.
Let's get that going at six thirty. Can we get a motion to have that set and approved?
Make a motion to set a public hearing for two thousand fifteen special assessments on October thirteenth at six thirty.
Uh, motion on the floor by Matt. Can we get a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carried unanimously. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, Jim Andries, county commissioner candidate. Welcome, Jim.
Welcome.
How's it going today?
Good, good, um.
Good.
You can come on up.
Yeah, you can come on up, Jim.
I'm gonna put you on the bench.
You're gonna get a little glare back.
Get your glasses.
Fire chief comes up here too.
I guess, um, first of all, you know, informal I like. So I want you guys to ask any questions at any time. For anybody that doesn't know, my name is Jim Andries. Born in Reyes, down by Buckman on a dairy farm. And, um, went to high school here in Peers, uh, married my wife Carol. We've been married for thirty-three years and we've got six children. And they just found out this weekend, we got our eighth grandchild on the way. So we're having a, we got a, we got a lot of family going, so that's pretty exciting. Um, you know, otherwise, um, do you guys, can, can anybody think of any questions, you know, about a commissioner or something that, you know?
There's something, Jim, that, that you see that, you know, obviously, you know, you wanna run for the position. Is there anything that you see on a coming scale or basis that you can think needs to be changed or worked at or worked out a little harder or colder?
Well, I, I think in general, I mean, one of the things, you know, and, and, my main platform is, is I think I have a different set of tools than any of our present commissioners or the guy I'm running against. But in general, I have nineteen years of running a dairy farm very successfully. And what I learned there is how to work really hard. And if you work really hard and you dig in, you can accomplish quite a few things. When I was on the farm, I also got involved in the community. I, you know, I did some wrestling stuff and I got involved with the church bazaars and some of that stuff that we all. And I'm a leader. I tend to get on top. I'm the guy that gets up there and ends up running it. For health reasons and just different business reasons, I decided to get out of farming and I, and I got into the Radio Shack business. And, um, you know, there, my set of tools that I bring, again, my hard work. I learned how to do electronics from being the dairy farmer, which is quite a change, but hard work. And, you know, things happen weird there. Some things you don't have control of. One of them is, is that your business is kinda dictated by what's going on around you. When we had a chance to become a Verizon dealer, you either have five stores or you don't play the game. So I adapted and, and we had three stores and we added a few more, and then we added a few more, and we've closed some. And my strengths are, is I'm a business guy. And I'm down to earth. And I've learned so much from the day I was a, a dairy farmer, when it was myself and, you know, my wife and, and we didn't really have any hired help. To, in the Radio Shack business, um, I think I started with two employees and we had up to forty employees. Um, and the experience is that you learn from, you know, hiring, sometimes having to let people go, I mean, all those things. Buying health insurance. I always thought if I'm gonna have a company, I'm gonna offer health insurance because it's important to me. Something that I think if I wanna be able to hire on a fair plane, I gotta, I gotta get with, you know. So I, I've tried to do things where people, people would say, well, Jim, you can't afford to do that. But I said, no, I'm gonna, that's how I'm gonna tailor it. So, um, I think I can sit in on a meeting, so back to the commissioner question. Um, when, the way the county used to be run, and I'm learning a lot as I run for this job. It used to be we had four or five old farmers and business guys that pretty much got together for a day and they hammered out the business. Well, now with the employees and the growth of government, I mean, it's, it's just huge. We have a full-time administrator, something like, you know, Scott here. And so the administrator does a lot of the suggesting and, and I think sometimes, sometimes I think we've lost contact with the commissioners actually getting more involved with, with the options. And I think I can bring that to the table. Um, so that's, that's my main platform is I really think, and I, and I like giving back to the community, um, is, is I can help, you know, with that aspect. Any other questions? I got a few things, um, that I wanna just make sure I, I, um. I'm kind of, you know, like I said, I'm kind of an all or nothing guy. I mean, when I decided to run for commissioner, I really didn't plan on selling my business. But as you guys probably all know, I got out of the business and I wanna do commissioner full-time. And like any job, you know, they say it's not really a complete full-time job, but I think if you, you know, if you really wanna research thing and do, you know, you guys can spend a lot of time.
Oh, yeah.
Or if you get too busy, you can spend not so much. But I, I wanna do it full-time. I think that, you know, I wanna be able to give that. I've got my cards. I got my cellphone on there. I've given my cellphone to every one of my customers that I've been at their houses over the last fourteen years. And I, I got called this morning on how to fix a TV. And it doesn't bother me. That's what I'm made of, you know? If you guys have a question, just call me.
So if you're calling commissioner, you don't mind me calling you?
I don't.
On my cable?
But, but I, I am, I am an accessible guy. I'm, I'm just not afraid of that. And you know what I tell people too? You guys all know. I mean, when I go to church, I leave it in there. When I go, when I go play a round of golf, I don't, I turn it off. I mean, and, and I, and I'm gonna get back to you. So I'm, I'm gonna be accessible that way. You know, and not, not to say I won't forget sometimes, because that can happen. But if I got my ducks in a row, I, I wanna be accessible and you will, you know, I will try to get you the answers, um, you know? As far as for things going on in the county, um, you know, it seems like, well, just like, like here, sometimes the things that get in the paper, it's just the, some of the gnarly things. You know, there's a, there's a barn permit down on the other end of the county and there, there's two little things, um, you know, those things come up. And it, it just some, sometimes seems like the organization isn't quite there. I think that it would be good for, for the board to be more cohesive. So one of my goals would be to try to get that, that board to run smoother. And, and that's everybody's goal that's on a board. But, um, but I, I'm, I'm big about team. I mean, we actually ran our store, um, budget is a big thing, kinda to roll into that at the same time. Three years ago, electronics isn't all gravy, you know, you, you make money and you, it's tough sometimes. Three years ago, we were sitting tough and we shrunk our business by about fifteen percent to make it profitable. And we did it with people. We, we didn't let anybody go. We did close one of our stores. It took two years to do it because we're in lease. But we better train the people and, and make them more efficient, you know, you. And, and we started running our business off the board. We ran off the six people that got together every week for an hour and you had to come every week for an hour. And we hammered things out. So I'm kinda familiar with that. And again, from a business standpoint, I think there's thirty-eight million that goes through the county. Seventeen million in tax dollars that we paid, um, rest comes out from the state and such. That's growing at a pretty fast rate. I, I, I think sometimes government might have to think about shrinking. So I'm gonna look at, not necessarily cutting a bunch of stuff, but there might be a way to shrink things down a little bit.
That kinda goes to my next question, Jim. Where do you see the county as far as budgets, tax increases, things of that nature? Because I know that's, that's always on a lot of people's minds, um.
You know.
At least that's always on my mind.
Well, and I, I take notice that you guys are, are, are good at, at holding your tax rate. Cause you might be collecting, I'm, I'm just having a, this is an open question. You guys might be collecting more money because your base is getting bigger, but you don't raise the rate, right?
Right.
See, I can't answer the question on, on the county. I saw the county grew at like two point five percent last year and the year before it was like four percent. But I don't know if that was just in volume of dollars gone through or for this tax increase. If I remember right in the paper, I think it was a very, very small tax increase. You know, taxes, you, you can't get around them. Um, but again, as I've, as my business grew, I learned that you have to, you know, you have to get conservative at some point or at least make sure you keep things under control. So, so I would say, you know, conservative, we don't wanna raise, but yet we, we have to look at long-range stuff, you know, if, you know. And I, and again, on some of the numbers in there, I know the county pays off nine hundred thousand dollars in debt each year. I don't know when that goes away. Maybe that's the jail or whatever it is. But as those things come up, we could maybe see us cutting tax. Depends what we have to do or what the growth level is. But, um, again, I'm gonna be looking at them from a businessman's perspective, which is a little different than the rest of the board. I don't really wanna get into it, but there, there really isn't anybody on the board that comes from a, a business that they actually made a living at. So that, that sets me a little bit apart.
When you're commissioner, Jim, do you get the opportunity to serve on different boards within that county? And if so, what boards are you looking at possibly getting on it? For what reasons? I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes on as far as like permits being pulled for barns, things like that. You know, that would obviously be a planning and zoning type deal. What type of boards interest you and for what reasons? What could you see yourself being a good fit with?
No, that's a really good question. Um, I know there's, there's a bunch of them. I think, you know, you take planning and zoning, you make, make the question easy for me. I do have experience because I was a landowner and I own, I own real estate in, in, in different cities. I've played with permit world and, and I kinda get it. One thing that frustrates me when I look at it from an outside is I just did a building project in Fergus Falls and, and my banker said, well, there's no way you can get it done for this. There's just no way. But I was able to get it done for less than the budget. And when you, when you do permitting, you, you have to follow all the rules. You can't get around them. But there's sometimes different avenues and ways to go at them. And, and looking ahead and catching things, um, you know, before they happen rather than after they happen. But I think planning and zoning would be fun for me because I have experience in, in building things and from the farm when we had, had different things. We had a guy that came to the chamber meeting in Little Falls, uh, Mr. Wenzel, I think it was named. Yeah, it's Wenzel, right? But anyway, I always liked it when he came. He talked about what, I was, uh, the chairman of the, the Little Falls Area Chamber. And when he came and gave his report, it was just nice, you know, that, that time they would replace the blue signs for fire numbers. They're a lot easier to see when you're trying to find them and for the fire guys, you guys, um. So, yeah, there's, and there's, there's plenty of them. I think most commissioners sit on three or four different committees. I can't name them right now, but.
Anything, anybody else has for Jimmy? Well, thanks for stopping in, Jim.
Well, and I don't know if I thank you guys for letting me come or having me come. I, I just wanna make sure that, I appreciate the opportunity.
No, it's nice that you come and you can explain to people.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, guys.
Uh, just kinda continuing on with, uh, the additions. Uh, first we have a gambling permit for the Knights of Columbus Raffle, uh, January thirty-first at the ballroom. Need a motion to have that approved.
Make a motion to, uh, grant the gambling permit for the Knights of Columbus for their raffle.
Motion on the floor by Mike.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carried unanimously. We have kind of a little dilemma, I guess I'll call it. Been approached by a, a resident on Second Avenue North, um, kinda northwest and Vincent, um, about putting in a four-way stop. Right now, they have, it's getting to be kind of a busy area. We actually have, uh, uh, the apartment building on the west side. On the east side, we have a daycare in traffic. Um, seem to be getting busier in that vicinity. I had a chance to go out and talk with, uh, several individuals who live, um, on that street and in the area. Wasn't able to contact everybody. Consensus seems to be with those folks that they would really like to see a four-way in there and kinda control the traffic a little better and try and slow people down maybe. Um, I guess, you know, it's something, you know, we should talk with, definitely have some input from Eric and Public Works Committee on what you guys think. And, uh, see if we can't figure something out.
Here, come up here.
You have to jump in line.
I'd love to ask Bob about that too.
Yeah, Bob.
Here you go, Brian wants it too. He's hoping to get in line.
Your guys' thoughts. I mean, you're out there every day. You see things.